Councilmember Miles?
Here.
Councilmember Zajac?
Here.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Here. Tracy Bax will lead us in our opening exercises tonight.
Oh God, the Father of us all, we humbly beseech thee in thy wisdom and knowledge to guide and direct the deliberations of this council along the path of truth, justice, and righteousness, so that what it decides for the welfare of our citizens may also redound to thy greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, universal, eternal.
Okay, this evening we have a public hearing relative to the adoption of the local law amending the city charter to add a new Article 28 in relation to flood prevention control. The time is October 8th at 6:01. Elizabeth, please call our speaker, any first speaker?
Our early speaker is Tanya Barone.
Good evening. With the agenda items coming out, you know, 24 to 48 hours before a meeting, it's very difficult for residents to be prepared to speak on anything. But from what I was reading, I'm not real clear on what benefit this has for the community. So if someone before voting on this could explain why this is being written and what benefits the residents will see for this resolution if it's passed. I just worry, my concerns are that if it puts more restrictions on people that are building along flood zones. Myself, I live on the water, so wondering how that will affect me as a resident. It seems that when I'm reading, it affects people that might have some existing structures or any new construction. But I want to make sure that I'm clear on how this is going to affect any development going forward. Is there some sort of development that may be going on in the future that you guys are all aware of, that we're not aware of, that this might affect? I don't want to see more restrictions, if that's what this is, being placed on future businesses that would like to come here and develop. Because I feel like the restrictions are very stringent already as far as the state and federal guidelines that oversee construction along waterways or in flood zone areas. Me being a Realtor, I'm faced with flood insurance issues a lot of times. And with the new guidelines that have come out, January 1st of this year, it has put a lot of properties in flood zones. Some parking lots are now even considered flood zones. There's a lot of mistakes on the map, so I want to be sure that we're going to benefit in some way. Because this is being presented as more of like a protection for homeowners and residents, and I don't feel like maybe it's going to benefit us. So if we can be really clear on why this is being put forward and what our benefits are, I would really like to be clear on that before it's voted on. Thank you.
There are no other speakers? Yes, that's the last one.
Okay, we, do we want to comment on that? I could tell you this, this is under the Home Rule Law with FEMA and it, this is to, to, to draw, bring us in line with the federal and state governments, so it kind of explained more in the agenda packet as you read through it. There's a pretty good explanation of what it's all about. Okay, with that, we will close the hearing at 6:05. Okay, this evening there are no presentations, so this will lead us to Agenda Item Speakers. We have three minutes, and please identify yourself and where your, what your residency is when you come up and speak. So with that, Liz, please call the first speaker.
Okay. Our first speaker is Lauren on Agenda Item Number Seven. Lauren?
Hi there. My name is Lauren Adornetto. I'm an attorney with Phillips Lidl. We represent Northeast Data LLC, which is the applicant to this council to request a rezon. 5380 Frontier Avenue. Specifically, the application has requested that the site, which is currently zoned in I-2 Heavy Industrial District under the city zoning code, be rezoned to include a high-energy usage overlay district to allow an existing data center facility to continue its operations at the site. As this council knows, the council accepted an environmental impact statement that was prepared by the applicant and reviewed by an independent consultant that was retained by the city to verify that the information in that environmental impact statement was consistent with the data presented by Block Fusion's technical experts. And the results of that study established that when the facility is operating at full capacity, there's no perceptible sound impacts to any residential districts or residential receptors, which are more than 800 feet away from the site. The site's immediately adjacent neighbors are all other heavy industrial users, such as Goodyear Occidental CSX Railroad. So in light of the resolution that's pending before the board this evening, we would ask that the council vote yea to issue positive seeker findings, conclude the environmental review for the project, and schedule a public hearing on a local law for the council's next meeting to consider formally amending the zoning map to add the high-energy usage overlay district to the site. And if there's any questions from the council ahead of that vote or discussion on the resolution, I'd be available to answer any questions.
Speaker is Kristen. Rogero, I don't want to...
Christian Rogero, that's okay. It's always easy to mess up.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name is Christian Rogero. I wanted to take a brief moment just to not promote myself, but simply give you and the public a sense of who's being considered tonight for the planning board appointment. I think it's important and healthy for the community to hear directly from the people who want to serve it. So I just wanted to share a little bit about why I applied and how I see this role. I've lived in Niagara Falls my entire life, and I've been fortunate enough to serve in a few different ways, including through education, through community service, and most recently as a board member for the Niagara Falls Historic Preservation Commission. My background is in mathematics and earth and environmental science with a focus on meteorology, and that work has really shaped how I think today. It's taught me to look for patterns, to think about systems, and to remember that every decision, like in nature, creates a ripple effect down the line. And to me, that's what good planning is. It's understanding how what we do today sets the stage for what's to come next. What draws me to the planning board is a simple belief, that thoughtful planning is one of the best investments a city can make. We can't solve today's challenges with the same kind of thinking that created them. Planning, at its best, helps a city evolve, finding new ways to connect growth with character and opportunity with quality of life. If appointed, I'd approach the position as a listener first, someone who wants to understand perspectives before reaching conclusions, and who values fairness and long-term thinking over quick wins. My goal is to help ensure our decisions today still make sense 20 years from now. So whatever the outcome tonight, I do appreciate your time. I appreciate the work you do for the city, and I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself. Thank you.
That is the last speaker.
Okay, do we have administrative updates?
None this evening, thank you.
Okay, we're at the community events portion. Does anybody have any announcements for community events here? Right, no. Okay, I will say that there's a, going to be a virtual public meeting for the City Waterfront Revitalization Program. It'll be on Tuesday, October 21st, from 5:30 to 7:00, to provide the community with a review and comment on updates, design, concepts that were presented at the design workshop last spring. The projects include the redesign of the LaSalle Expressway, the scenic parkway between John Daly Boulevard and I-190, enhanced bicycle and pedestrian amenities, and on High Park Boulevard and a conversion of the Public Safety Building up on High Park Boulevard. If you want more details, you can contact the Director of City Planning, Kevin Forma, or you can write to nfny-planning@niagarafalsny.gov. That is a virtual hearing. I also have a, after the meeting, if anybody wants to stick around, I have a handout for whoever might want to take a picture of it. All right, we're now at the review of adoption of the agenda, Section 4. Are there any motions to amend the agenda as proposed? If not, may I have a motion to accept the agenda as proposed?
Motion.
May I have a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. All right, we're at Section 5. We're going to review the minutes from September 3rd, 2025, and September 17th, 2025. Does anybody note any corrections that be made? If not, then may the minutes be approved as distributed last Friday, okay? Okay, from the city clerk's office.
There's nothing to report this evening.
Okay. So that will move us on to our Agenda Items. And Legislative Item Number One, may I have a motion, please?
For item number one, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a change order number two to the agreement with CIR Electoral-
Gold Construction Corp. in the amount not to exceed $0.00 relative to additional electrical work at the John Duke Senior Center as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated October 1st, 2025.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, information requests? Okay, any opposition, items for debate? Okay, I will not restate the, the motion unless I'm asked to do so, so if anybody needs us to repeat them, just say so. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. Agenda Item Number Two, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a change order number one to the agreement-
With Walter S. Johnson Building Co., Inc., in an amount not to exceed $0.00 relative to additional general construction work at the Gulf Dome Annex as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated October 1st, 2025.
Are there any information requests?
Sir, a second.
A second.
Okay, a second, okay. Brian seconded it. Okay, any information requests? Any opposition? Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. The, item number three, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase and service agreement with Securitas Technical Corporation for new facility security systems, equipment, and software, with related services to be provided at the Niagara Falls City Jail and Police Headquarters, and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the said vendor as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated October 1st, 2025.
May I have a second, please? Information requests, anyone? Opposition? Okay, Liz?
Councilmember Archie? Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. Legislative Item Number Four, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor and the city controller to process the payment of back taxes that the city owes to the County of Niagara from 2018, currently totaling $14,799.71 as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated October 1st, 2025.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any information requests? Any opposition?
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
I hope that from this point on, that we really start paying more attention to tax. Some of these numbers are super low, and I'm trying to wonder why, why we're even voting on something like this tonight. This is kind of a semi-joke a little bit, so. But of course, we got to pay our taxes to the county as well, so, yeah.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. Item Number Five, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, for Number Five, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and enter into an encroachment agreement with Shawan &amp; Sons LLC to accommodate its request to place a seasonal patio on the public right-of-way of its commercial property located at 222 Rainbow Boulevard as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated October 1st, 2025.
And a second?
Second.
Information requests? Any opposition? Okay, Liz, roll call.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. Resolution Number Six, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to the adoption of a local law amending the City of Niagara Falls charter to add a new Article 28 in relation to flood damage prevention.
May I have a second, please? Information requests?
Does this at any point bring any, is it, is it a cost that could possibly be at some point associated with this? You know, with us voting this in today at some point, you know? To the city, yes.
I'm not aware of any possible financial impact on the city. There was, there was a question posed about what effect, what effect might it have on property owners. And on that subject, one thing that I can, I can advise is that the DPC did a review of our local law. We do have an existing local law with the same title. It's just not easily located and it's outdated. The DPC conducted a review of our current language and came up with a list of solutions or improvements. And what's interesting is that what motivated the DPC to take a look at our existing local law is that there was a change to the FEMA flood map for the City of Niagara Falls. And there is a silver lining in that, in that FEMA flood, flood map. The new, the new map of the floodplains for residents of the City of Niagara Falls, especially residents who own property, whether it's commercial property or homes, in what's called the Gill Creek floodplain. And to summarize, the Gill Creek floodplain on the old map was around a large area, sort of concentrated around High Park Lake and spreading out in all directions, north, south, east, and west. And as a result of that, a lot of homes, a lot of homeowners have been paying extra insurance premiums because of that flood risk. And so their premiums have been on the high side compared to people who don't live in the floodplain, right? So the nice news is that because that floodplain was shrunk down to become really close to the, to the boundaries of Gill Creek, there's a lot of homeowners who are no longer in the Gill Creek floodplain. So that is a financial benefit to them, and this local law is an outgrowth, an outgrowth of that nice change in the floodplain.
To also respond, that Gill Creek is, is Echota, and so Tanya asked, there was previously not houses, new housing, able to be built in the space because of being in the floodplain and the insurances. And to my understanding, there is a developer that will, that owns some land there that will be looking to put some single-family homes up in spaces that they are in. And I can talk to you more about it afterwards.
Thank you.
Any opposition? Okay, Liz, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. Legislative Item Number Seven, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to, to, to issuance of positive seeker findings for Northeast Data LLC's data center at 5380 Frontier Ave, SBL 160 dot 14 dash 1 dot 1 dot 2, and schedule a public hearing before the city council concerning the proposed adoption of a local law amending the official zoning map of the City of Niagara Falls to add a high-energy usage overlay district to the council.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Information requests? Opposition?
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles? Councilmember Zajac?
Yes.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. Action Item Number Eight, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to scheduling a public hearing before the city council concerning the proposed adoption of a local law amending the official zoning map Schedule 8 of Chapter 1308 of the Codified Ordinances to rezon 1717 McKenna Ave from a C1-a neighborhood commercial to a 1i business park. I said that backwards, I1.
May I have a second? Information requests? And any opposition? And, any opposition?
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. Legislative item number nine, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, for number nine, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to the appointment of a new member to the city planning board to fill a vacancy created by resignation.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Information request? Opposition? Liz, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Archie?
Just, uh, just want to say thank you for just showing up to, uh, express why you want to participate in activities within the, uh, the community, yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
I echo those things, since basically, you know, once someone wants a position, whether you're running for a position or you're seeking a seat like this, to show up is a big thing, so, uh, yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Uh, similarly echoing Councilmember Miles and Archie. Many may or may not know, these positions are voluntary. So all the people that sit on these boards are doing it for, as Mr. Rizziro said, you know, seeing what they can do for the city going forward. So, thank you for coming today and expressing that and reaching out prior to, uh, yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. Legislative item number ten, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to establishing a task force to explore opportunities related to financial products contemplated by the Genius Act.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any information requests? Any opposition? Liz, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. Legislative item number eleven, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move the council vote to approve resolution relative to scheduling a public hearing concerning an estimate of the amount necessary to pay the expenses for the recycling and refuse program during fiscal year 2026.
And may I have a second, please?
Second.
Any information requests?
So this basically just for a, to have a public hearing to discuss it. Um, the numbers that are on here, so is it stating that nothing is changing as it pertains to our refuse, uh, fee? Okay, yeah.
Any opposition? Okay, Liz, please call the roll.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajak?
Yes.
Councilchairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. Okay, that brings us to the end of our legislative items. And now on the public speakers for the good of the community.
So our first speaker is Vincent Colley.
Good evening, illustrious council, Vincent Colley, Niagara Falls, New York. Uh, just a couple things and I'll be out your hair. On a recent trailer of Stepmother's Three, uh, on a podcast, there were a couple issues that came up. One in regards to the RFP. I was never on the impression that if you reject the first bidder, it automatically goes to the next bidder. I was never on that impression. However, I wasn't the impression that whether it's temporary or not, whoever's gonna run and have that contract has to be council confirmed. So I don't, I'm trying to understand, is it open, is it not open, is it being ran by someone else? Um, is somebody temporary in there running it that hasn't been gone through the council to do that? G M L law, G M L would be applicable there? Maybe I'm missing something? Just curious about, um, how that would happen, because it would have to go through the council to be approved in order to do anything, whether it's temporary or otherwise. Uh, maybe I'm missing something. And on that same point, the Ice Pavilion as a revenue stream, are we get, again, are we getting into the Ice Pavilion business now? The hockey running business now? I mean, if we're just gonna, if we, if we want revenue from it, let's let a private person run it, oper- uh, want it professionally with an actual contract in paper that we get taxes from, and we can increase our revenue that way. But the city's trying to do it, again, do we want, and we, and we're trying to be in the animal sheltering business too. Come on. Let's, you hire someone to do it, it's a service. You hire someone, what would make sense, and what I'm questioning is, how about we let someone do it? But going back to, and I'll get to the dog shelter in a minute too, again, but going back to the hockey rink, is the plan B blame COVID and shove the vendor down our throats? Is that plan B? Or is there another plan of how we professionally have someone operate the ice, the, the, the shelter? And with that being said, just turn it to the dog shelter. Did the meeting with the architects happen? Did that go on already? Do we, do we got a crayon drawing? Do we got a sketch of what the animal shelter is gonna be? I know we have new rules coming out in January twenty-twenty-six. Do, do the taxpayers know what we're getting for four million dollars? And also, was that number based on something? Because if we're just meeting with the architects, do we know that, or was there another meeting? Is this a different meeting from the outside to the inside? Just, just trying to clear up that, that confusion, so I just understand what the process is, because I just want to know what the thing looks like, how is it gonna look? How's it gonna be laid out? Just simple things like that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanya Barone.
So as Vincent was saying, um, this operator for the ice rink has been in there since October first. And I'm also curious to when, um, the council is going to approve a contract, uh, what the terms are, and how we are letting this person operate without a contract being approved by the council. So I would like to know that as well. I also had heard that there's new furniture and desk being moved into the ice rink. I want to know who's paying for that. And also, they removed the stone house, stone room sign, where did that go? So there's being, there's things being done in there, and I've also heard that there was painting being done, and the union kind of had a fit about that and stopped them from painting the locker rooms. So, what you fail to understand is, even though the mayor and the administration counts on the public to be stupid and not be involved or, you know, not have correct information, there are a lot of people, a lot of residents, that are up in arms over the hashtag Tree Gate scandal and the Ice Pavilion scandal, where we retaliate on people and then change our minds and then just throw your buddy in there. Haphazard dealings with our money is not okay. And I'm not saying that it's any of your fault, but I want to know who up there is gonna stand with Dante Miles in getting this information for all of the community and residents here, the taxpayers that want to know where the other two trees are located. It's a shame that we had to find out on our own that the mayor and his neighbor had two of the trees removed, and I don't care if it's in their easement or not. There are people coming forward that have had their trees put on a list for years. The photographs are popping up of the, the hazardous trees, the limbs, the damage, the potential injuries that could, you know, happen from these trees that have happened from the trees. We've seen quite a few lawsuits here being settled, um, for damages. So I want to know, did the mayor skip the list? And is he privy to getting his tree cut down and the neighbor's tree cut down before the other residents? I want to know all of the information, I want it transparent. I think that, um, obviously, that's one of the reasons why I'm running, because I want to make sure that we have a transparent government. Number one, that the people are well informed, that we're working as a team. I don't see a team here working together. That's very disappointing. I see one person that's taking the initiative, but I would like others to join him. Regardless of your feelings for each other, work as a team, go get the information and make it public. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Barksdale. Michael?
Good evening. That was probably one of the longest and quietest walks I've had in a long time. Happy Wednesday. So my name is Michael Barksdale, Niagara Falls resident. I'm a taxpayer, uh, parent, a voter, and community stakeholder. I'm here tonight because Niagara Falls is facing a literacy crisis, one that is directly tied to the future of our children. Right now, the Niagara Falls City School District, o- uh, only twenty-five percent of the students are proficient in math. Only twenty-eight percent are proficient in reading. These numbers place us in the bottom five percent of all districts in New York State. To put it plainly, nearly three out of four, uh, four children in our city cannot read or do math at grade level. Uh, the state has designated our district as a target district under the Every Student Succeeds Act accounting framework. Nationally, Niagara Falls schools rank better than only five percent of the districts in the country. These are not just the statistics, these are our children. And literacy is not just about reading books, it's about opportunity, employment, and breaking cycles of poverty. A child who struggles to read by third grade is far more likely to struggle in high school and far more likely to struggle in life. Councilmembers, I'm asking for your partnership with the community. The school board has the authority, but the city has the responsibility to hold them accountable. Our community deserves clear goals, measurable results, and a commitment to excellence in education. Here's the action items for you. Uh, the council can act in the following ways. You can formally call in the Niagara Falls City School District Board of Education to publish their clear literacy goals with easy access, measurable benchmarks, and annual progress reports, so we can see what's going on, so we can help make changes along the way. Uh, you can also invite the school board and superintendent to testify before the council in public, where parents and community stakeholders can also speak. We also want to leverage what you're already doing here in the city by expanding literacy-related support in libraries, youth programs, workforce development, and after-school activities, aligning city resources with the schools. You can also elevate this crisis to a citywide issue, making more people aware, ensuring residents understand the educational failure and broad consequences such as crime, poverty, disinvestment. And so this is not just a school issue, it's a city-wide issue. Literacy impacts crime, employment, health, and the future of Niagara Falls itself. Our children can't afford to wait another decade. Uh, thank you for your time and service to our community. I look forward to working together to make sure every child in Niagara Falls has an opportunity to learn, achieve, and thrive. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Lawrence Blieber Jr.
Good evening. Um, I'm a resident of Niagara Falls and a parent of two children in our school district. I'm here tonight because we're in the midst of a crisis. The school board's plan to forego a full transparent search for our next superintendent is a decision that will make that crisis worse. Let me be clear about the situation. Nine out of our eleven schools on the state watch list label that's failing. To be failing, that means that you have to fail three subgroups consistently for three years. All our black kids in all nine of those schools have reported poor test scores. The other two are special ed and other minority groups consistently with poor test scores. Okay? So, this isn't a problem, it's a five-alarm fire for our community. We've been dead last in reading proficiency for six years in a row. Our average is so bad that even if you doubled it, we'd still be dead last behind North Ton Wanda. In a crisis, you don't settle for the first solution. You conduct a thorough search to find the best possible leader to turn things around. The superintendent is the CEO of the education system. This person must manage millions of our tax dollars and be responsible for saving the education of our children. To not conduct a national search now is the definition of fiscal and educational responsibility. With our schools in this state, we cannot afford to settle for good enough. We need a proven leader with a track record of success. We won't find them if we don't look. The search must be, go beyond the sixty-sixth Street parking lot. It just, it requires it. But this is bigger than our schools, it's about our city's survival. What are businesses looking for when they invest? For traffic, car traffic, the education of the people there to determine if it's worthwhile. People have to be able to read a manual, that's why we're a bad fit. That's why you'll get edu- uh, environmentally dangerous places and, and things here, because they know people are more desperate. They're, because they're like, well, they'll take what they can get because they can't get better competition. One out of, and three of our graduates can't read. That's just based on the fact that they stopped testing in eighth grade, and only one of three has reading proficiency for eighth grade. So, you know, they're not even getting into the military. One out of two from this area, according to a recruiter. Uh, what we need from you is, we, um, what company is gonna move here, what young families gonna be here, move here, I'm sorry, here it is. Please use your voice. Tell the school board that this is a moment of crisis and our children, our city demand a lifeline. We must have a full, national, transparent search for a superintendent who can save our schools. Our children's future depend on it. We hope that you guys will sign on to a letter demanding for more. We are also gonna, in long term, create a petition for more, and most importantly, we need all of you here tomorrow at the sixty-sixth Street School, um, Old School for, uh, at six-thirty for the meeting, and next Wednesday for the next school board meeting. Next Wednesday's the one you can talk at, tomorrow's the one you just have to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me go on.
That was our last speaker.
Okay, meeting's adjourned.